The special meeting on May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen of the Village Board. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Court, if you could do the roll call, please.
Trustee Gray. Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Trustee Horn.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Right.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Raiske.
Here.
Mayor Tobler is not present. I'm so used to hearing that, that is so funny. That's the first blooper of the week.
Mayor Parkers.
Thank you very much.
So notice.
There is a resemblance.
It's like a long man.
Yeah, tell you what, guys. Well, I'm still suffering from the need for orientation here, guys, so come here with us. Dan will get a kick out of that one way. I was so used to hearing it, I just, amazing how traditions work, isn't it? All right. First item on the agenda here is open to the public, agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes, come to the podium, give your name and address. Next item is consent agenda, there's nothing on the consent agenda this time. Communication Corp.'s office, I don't believe, do you have anything to point to? Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick orientation that will help out, hopefully help out the transition, and I'd just like to start, just go over a few things and acclimate, and by all means, I would invite any of the trustees or any newly elected officials to contact me at any time and happy to answer any questions. Our Police Department, since Chief Sipkar is here, I'll start with them. I believe the correct address being fifty-three, fifty-seven West Main. Is that right, Jess? Thank you, I got something right. Comprised of Chief Sipkar, two sergeants, nine control persons, one of which serves as a detective. I believe at this time they have six part-time officers. They are dispatched out of East Com. East Com is located in Crete, so when you dial nine-one-one, that's exactly where it goes, is to Crete East Com Dispatch Center, and then they are dispatched accordingly. The Police Department is a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five operation, and they enforce all of your local and state laws, and at this point, knowing that the chief is here, would like to defer for a moment, and John, Chief, if you have anything to add to that, please, this is the time now.
Just briefly for me.
Talking in my.
If you have an emergency, it's more effective to call nine-one-one than it is to call me, and not that I wouldn't be happy to take a phone call from anybody, but I have to make another phone call in order to get people to you, and that's absolutely for certain. And the other thing that I would mention is, is that we have an incident command system that everybody needs to be trained on, and since I'm the one that gives the heart to people about that, if you have any questions about it, or if you need some information about it, I'd be happy to give you websites to go to and be able to get the training, it's a requirement for everybody, and other than that, welcome.
Thanks. And Chief, if you would, maybe you could get that together for NIMs in notice form, we'll get it in their mailboxes and ask them to complete that absolutely at their leisure. Additionally, for the Police Department, and you will hear this throughout my short presentation here, there is certainly nothing wrong with any elected official contacting the chief or what have you, if there's a question that arises or anything, but we would like to indicate and stress that each and every department that works for the municipality really does so with the best interest of the residents and the municipality as a whole in mind, and as we move forward, I'll touch on that just a little bit more briefly. Not part of the Police Department, but certainly there's some association there, the village does have a fire and police commission. We only use the fire portion of that, and that is since we have achieved the milestone of in excess of five thousand residents.
So far, we use the police portion.
Oh yeah, sorry about that, you are correct. The police portion, my fault. The Police Commission generally takes care of all the hiring, this is for full-time individuals, hiring, termination, discipline, promotional testing, and the like. The Commission is made up of three members, and those members are appointed by the mayor. So, and next on the agenda here is the Department of Public Works. Obviously, we have two locations, one being behind this building, the other out by the I-57 water tower. It's comprised of, currently comprised of Superintendent Dave Grisel, a water, licensed water operator, two laborers, one electrician, one mechanic, part-time help, including a trade carpenter and a tin tradesman, and other summer help as needed. We bring people on to mold the grass, give some assistance during the summer months. Some of the operations there obviously include operating, operation of the water system. There's two wells currently in town, there's two water towers, all the fire hydrants and the associated valves with those are the responsibility of the Water Department. Additionally, they read all the water meters bi-monthly and take care of any meter replacements or repairs. Our current ordinance does need some updating as to the makeup of the Department of Public Works, and that is in the works to have that handled. Additionally, they operate the sanitary collection system. Aqua Illinois processes our sanitary waste, but we're responsible for all the pipes and everything that gets the delivery to Aqua. Currently, there are two meters that Aqua meters our sanitary flow and is actually how we're billed. I'm going to say probably two years ago, maybe two and a half, just before I came on with employment here, the Aqua contract was settled, and I understand that it was a, it was a large area for heartburn prior to that. I believe that it had prohibited Moni from some expansion process, but nevertheless, that is now behind us, and we have, we have the ability to look forward and expand our system. I'd just like to note that both responsibilities combined are huge responsibilities in and of their own nature. Inflow and infiltration for the sanitary side, that's when storm water gets into the sanitary system. Once it's in the sanitary system, it goes through the meters that Aqua meters us on and builds us on, and we get billed additionally for that. And that storm water, you know, no one paid for that billing to go through there, so it creates a deficit for us.
Can you explain just first to someone here first, how does that actually happen? Does it get into various ways?
Sure. I and I is usually, it can happen a large number of ways, inflow and infiltration, I and I. The way most generally that it happens is our residents have their sump pumps hooked up to the sanitary sewer. That is illegal to do that. We will be checking that as we develop the program. There will be ordinances presented before this board to enact so that there is some repercussions for that, and that is the biggest violation that historically has found throughout communities. It is a very costly process there when the residents do that. I'm sure that they probably do it unbeknown, unbeknown, but the real problem is that it turns into quite a situation for us to handle. Sometimes, so much so, if you are aware at all, University Park Station of Aqua expanded, they did a huge expansion here, probably finished up last year. It was because they could not handle the amount of inflow that they were getting there, and so the way that they do it now is they try and handle it, store it, and then process it as they can, but once it goes through those meters, if we reach a certain level by contract, we get penalized. And currently, I'm going to speculate here, but we probably have a twenty thousand dollar penalty coming to us from the last storm. So it's a very serious issue, it is like number one on our hit list, and it's just something that isn't fixed overnight. I only share that so that you, as elected officials, can start to get your arms around a much broader picture.
Question, Mr. Mayor. If I may add to it at this point, two questions. Would this be a situation that should be called, one, engineering or the building of a home, to make sure that the builder is actually applying those subpumps in the right, you know, to the storm system and not to sanitary sewer systems?
And that is correct. The builders won't, will not pass inspection if it's hooked up to the sanitary, but with today's piping, PVC, the homeowner doesn't like the soggy spot in their lawn, they're going to take it out of their lawn and they're going to put it in the sanitary. Not all areas have been provided for storm sewers that can be hooked up to. Future developments will entail that, and that's part of the ordinances that need to come back before this board, so that future developments, we plan smarter and we get that storm water underground into the storm system, and now your homeowner is really has no reason to mess with it. But that's what we find, and then of course, any older part of town, you know, you're just going to have that time, but we can, we can get that taken care of, you know, one by one. It'll be a tough process. Did you have a second question?
Yeah, as far as the fire hydrants are concerned, now you said that our Public Works handles our fire hydrants, would that also include everything in West Harlem that Aqua maintains along with the fire station?
Good question, no, only within our corporate limits. Okay, and there, that water is a different system, that is actually Aqua Illinois water. Okay, so we have water pretty much everywhere in the village. Sanitary is operated by Aqua Illinois on the west side of I-57. You know, they have a main trunk there, and that's where people tap into over there. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wallace, I was under the impression, and I'm kind of wrong, that there was a time element also, like in severe storm, they allow a forage for a certain amount of time, but if it continued, then we get charged?
That is correct, and we met the elements of that.
I assumed that when you said the twenty thousand dollar charge, and I just don't want everyone to get scared that it's usually on a severe storm.
Right, it's not an immediate peak that we get to, but, and we have to sustain that for a while, so, you know, that, those are internal things that we'll manage, and those that become more involved with that based on assignments that the mayor will hand out in the future, you'll have a better understanding of that. This is, I'm just trying to present an overview.
Just, and this, this whole thing is meant to be an orientation, so please, everybody ask whatever questions are necessary. This is, the reason why it's a special meeting is just to make sure everybody has opportunity to get up to speed on some of these things. Trustee Patton was indicating was going back to the contract law, where they give us a couple of years of grace, but it was mostly based on a prolonged, last year was rather dry, and we had rain obviously, but it wasn't prolonged, like we did this last, it was three weeks ago on a Thursday when it was that major downpour, it was prolonged. That's when we get hurt is when it's prolonged, like that over a period of, what is it, over forty-eight hours, or twenty-four, forty-eight hours, something like that?
Twenty-four over the peak flow.
Right.
And our peak flow is determined, it's laid out in the contract, is how that's determined. We have the ability to check their figures and everything, we just don't take their word for it. Aqua is very cooperative, and, you know, we have to work together to accomplish that.
And just, just so everybody's aware, during that storm, our Public Works, because it was so much water everywhere, our Public Works Department was out early that day, and they had done a really good job of starting to narrow down, once they had finally gotten the major issues that handled, they were going around lifting the storm, or the sewer covers to see where the most obvious infiltration was taking place.
Right.
And if they could identify that, at least gives us a good starting point for which areas of town need to be really hit the hardest on when we start up on some of these things.
As indicated by the mayor, that's the first step, and I and I, that's something we can walk the trunk lines and start to check those manholes and so forth. One of the sanitary covers, just so that you know, is out at Route fifty, just a little bit north of Moni Manhattan Road. I believe that there's, might be a yellow stake in the ground, and when there's any significant rain, that manhole cover is generally underwater. So if that is not sealed tightly, there's a huge inflow problem there. We have checked it, it is sealed tightly, but there could be several of those throughout the system. Then you have cave-ins where a pipe has failed and rainwater's just washed into it and starts to make the hole bigger and bigger, but we just repaired two of those, actually one was on Sunset Court. So we're attacking the obvious, the large, the big, but we have not gotten to residential units at this point.
And inspections, are we currently testing for, checking for any of those during inspections, or is that important?
No, actually, for, because we have no enforcement that's in place on that, actually we need to get the enforcement done first, and then plumbing inspections, that will have to be performed by licensed, Illinois licensed plumber, of which we do not have any on staff.
But that would take place upon the sale of the property?
No, no, that would be, once we get the program going, we will set up a program to make appointments and get in and inspect people's homes, whether they're selling or not. We have to turn this around much quicker than that.
Every home in the village must be inspected?
Absolutely. It's important. And I'd like to wrap up about Public Works is that maintenance, we have through, at least since I've been here, I, for two and a half years, we have tried to bring as much in-house work that we are capable of handling, and in my discussions with Mayor Farquhar, he intends to do the same, and by doing so, the Village Board previously, probably maybe a month or so ago, authorized the purchase of a sewer, jetter, vector truck. It's a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar purchase. It's probably something that, you know, in hindsight, it would have been great if it was here, you know, ten years ago, but today is today. It will perform many functions and will allow us to clean our storm sewers, which is going to help the drainage flow of the community, and I'd like to point out that Moni has some drainage issues. We're high, but we're flat. It's hard to get rid of the rainwater. It's very important to us that we watch our, and plan very diligently on our storm water management, so that is something, you know, that we are looking at every day. Moving on, I'd like to speak a little bit just about administration, which is housed out of this building here. Excuse me, it's comprised of myself, the village administrator, a finance person, which handles payroll, accounts payables, accounts receivables, et cetera, a building department coordinator slash clerical individual, which kind of spearheads the building department in dealing with the public at the window, code enforcement officer, those are all full-time individuals, and currently we have one part-time clerical. The functions really of each, myself, I deal with day-to-day operations, I coordinate the efforts with the department heads, the department heads have their subordinates that report to them, and ultimately, I'm the liaison with the mayor and the village board. This is one of those areas that I'm going to break and just ask that, that, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, is that certainly you can reach out as elected officials to any department head, but we really ask that you, you try not to take any actions that would direct any workforce. Employees, you know, subordinates, they really can't have two bosses, and the department heads report on a regular basis, they're very good at keeping me informed, and I'd like to think that I'm very good at keeping the village mayor and the trustees informed. So I just throw that out there for information, you know, you're certainly welcome to contact any department head and ask any questions, that's not the issue here, but to try and ask them to, you know, have some go over here and kind of disrupts, because we are a small workforce, and in doing so, in order to maintain efficiency, there's a lot of time and effort put into planning, and I can tell you that Public Works isn't planned for tomorrow. Okay, they're probably planning out for the whole month. That's, that's the way that superintendent works. John, Chief Sipkar has got his individuals, they may be scheduled for schooling, they need to be scheduled for onsite training, there's just a lot of things that go on behind the scenes, and we would enjoy the trustees, as past trustees have been involved, you know, then you're in the know, you know how it operates, and that's the goal here.
If I could just go along with that. Part of the reason why he brings it up is because in the past, we've had, in years past, I recall a situation where the previous Public Works Director was, was given a task by a trustee at the time to put a stop sign up somewhere. Well, Public Works Director said, fine, puts the stop sign up, then somebody else says, there's no ordinance to back that. So there's things like that, that are important to follow protocol and make sure that, as the administrator indicated, by all means, take the time, get to know the department heads, personnel, things of that sort, it's going to be a friendly, welcome environment for all that. We set policy here, it's up to the administrator to deal with the execution of those policies and that are established. You got to do your fact-checking, so that's important, that you're actually asking the questions of the department heads especially, to find out the things that are intriguing you in those areas. Pertaining to, while they're at work doing different things, we need to be very conscientious of the fact that, let's say, a trustee comes in the office and says, hey, can I bother you for a minute? Well, we may not realize it, but they might have three hours worth of work in two hours to get it done, and so the employees need to be directed to let us know the hard-fast reality of how much time they have available if somebody asks to interact with them. Actually, I had the, one of the department heads, I asked him to spend a little time answering a couple of questions for me, since can we schedule that for three days from now, and it's like, okay. I was impressed, you know, because that's, he's, you know, it was impressive, anyhow. And that's fine, but it's not to, not in any effort to keep anybody in the dark, it's a matter of trying to keep on task, and so I think that's very important to pursue.
Sure, and thank you, and then I will say that the Village of Moni is, is very efficient in their operations. We can become a little bit more efficient, but we are operating very lean as far as personnel goes, and sometimes too lean, but, you know, we make it through. We do realize, from myself to the department heads, to everyone that works for the municipality, we know who we work for. We know that it's the residents. We try and take the time to explain something. It may not be the answer that they want to hear, but it's going to be the truth, and it's going to, it's going to be justifiable. Our actions are ninety-nine percent of the time justifiable, so, you know, and it means a lot to each and every one of us, from my position to the department heads and all the subordinates that, that we have elected officials that, you know, back us on that, that, you know, they're going to come to you and complain to you, but the first thing is, you know, we hope that you realize that we're probably doing it for a reason, you know, and it's okay to, you know, check into it and ask us, you can question me on anything, that's fine, and if I don't have an answer, I'll find you one, but you'll get, you'll get in the know of that as things move along. Finishing up on the administration, you know, myself, I deal with any problem from A to Z that can't be handled by, by either a department head or subordinate here in the office, but generally, everybody, you know, they do their job and we get it done. As I indicated, finance does, you know, payroll and payables and receivables and so forth. Building Department, they issue, all deal with the public and take in building permit applications, sign applications, coordinate with the building inspector who happens to be a contracted employee, not a direct employee of ours, coordinates with code enforcement on signage and so forth, so there's a lot of, excuse me, back and forth in that as well, and then code enforcement is actually the individual that is out and enforcing codes. Generally, they are the lower-level violations of city ordinance, grass, signs in the wrong place, or illegal signage, junk vehicles to a point, and then at some point it will get turned over to the Police Department in our adjudication system, but, you know, that is a frontline individual, so we try and have done, I feel, a pretty good job in training them to, we're interested in one thing, that's compliance, we don't approach these things with a hammer, we try and identify the violation, tell them why it is a violation, and give them a reasonable timeframe to correct that violation. If they fail, you know, and we always offer them to contact us for further explanation. If they fail to take any action, they will hear from us again, and we use progressive type of information there, you know, so it's not instantly writing a ticket or anything like that, so we try and work with people. If I might move.
Yes. You said it earlier that we had two full-time people in code enforcement, so would that include this contractor for the building inspector?
No, we have one code enforcement individual who is full-time, and then there is a full-time building slash, building coordinator slash clerical that really takes in the permits upfront, but all building permits go to the contracted building inspector, okay? He's the one that actually signs off on the permit because he's, has the qualifications, credentials there.
What is the internal paperwork processing schedule?
Yes. I'd like to move on, and I'm almost done here, I'd like to move on to the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I would like to ask counsel to correct me if I go awry here, Larry, please, thank you. Zoning Board, or the Plan Commission is virtually what it says, it's the plan. Zoning Board of Appeals is, and they're one and the same. The Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals are made up of seven members, one being a chairman, all of which are mayoral appointments. The Plan Commission is utilized to plan for future development and land use of the municipality to the extent of one and a half miles beyond our current borders, and that would be a comprehensive plan. They put it together, what do we expect in this area, is it going to be commercial, is it going to be residential, and you can go up, and your plan, comprehensive plan should include plans to extend beyond your borders by one and a half miles.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Is that, as much as it doesn't include another incorporated municipality?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unincorporated areas. Thank you for that correction. And then we have the Zoning Board of Appeals, which really is, you know, they interpret it, interpretation of the ordinances as they may apply to a certain situation. They offer an administrative review process, they offer the opportunity to hear requests for variances, conditional uses, and conditional uses are those uses that are, cannot be classified into one specific zoning district, but nevertheless, these decisions need to be made, and then of course, moving on to special uses as well. As the administrator, I've been assigned as the, as the zoning administrator, an example of business license application comes in, I want to open this business at this address, the first thing that we do is look at that business, what type of business it is, and does it fit the zoning classification? If it does, find the business license processes on it. If it doesn't, that's a stop right there, we have to contact the applicant, and we try and work through those issues. And in its entirety, the Village Board may refer items for further vetting, if you will, of certain situations to the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, if that is something that the Village Board wants them to look into, a specific situation to. to a greater degree than is discussed at the village board level. The Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals are scheduled to meet on the third Wednesday of every month, providing they have something on their agenda. As it is, David Holston is the chairman of our, of our Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals at this time and does a fine job in that position, so.
Give you twenty dollars, Jaylen.
Thank you very much, sir. Last but not least, only because it is attached, it is a fund of the village, it is a taxing entity, it, we, because of meeting, reaching that great milestone of five thousand inhabitants, we have a police pension fund that forced us to move over to downstate police pension. Initially, the full-time law enforcement personnel were covered under IMRF, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and by reaching five thousand, that had to be transferred down to the Downstate Article Three Police Pension Fund. That has been set up and basically, the way that it works is the law enforcement officers contribute at a rate of nine point nine seven, I think, it's nine point nine seven percent of their wage into the fund. The village taxes, you'll see on your tax bill, a police pension fund tax on there, that goes into the pension fund. However, the pension fund itself is managed by a pension fund board, which is made up of two appointments from the mayor, two active, full-time members of the police department elected from within the ranks of the police department, and one retiree if one is available. And then their job is to make investments that is governed by law. There is minimum training that's involved there. It, it, it turns into quite an ordeal. You may, I'm sure that everyone has heard about the, the pension fund crisis, if you will, in the state of Illinois. Well, there are, you know, that, that has to do with state and I really don't wanna get into too much of this, but right now, our fund is underfunded because it's brand new. We have taken the steps and the citizens did not even realize it because we did not raise the taxes, but we have taken the steps to fund the police department pension fund as if it were fully funded. And we've also added tax revenue that helps bring it out of deficit funding and, and get it to where it is in a funded position. And it's because we're new and we have people that have worked there and actually, I believe, Chief, you're, you're eligible for retirement at this time, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay. That would, that would make a sizable dent in the, in the Downstate Pension Fund for us. But, yes.
Is there an estimation of how many years it'll take to be fully funded?
They, they do the fully funding on a thirty-five year amortization. That is really governed, the Article Three Police Pension Fund is really governed by the Illinois Department of Insurance Pension Division. So they set those standards. If you want the truth, the state was kinda sleeping at the switch, okay, when all this stuff was going on, okay? Your local municipalities, they have a lot of control over the pension fund. That is, the wages that you pay, the, you know, whether you choose to set your levy at the full rate in order to fund the pension fund. Some municipalities don't. They'll steal from the pension fund tax levy to put it over here and the next thing you know, everyone has a big surprise, why is the pension fund underfunded? It's because we didn't do our jobs, you know? But rest assured, Moni is set up to get that moving forward and, and actually the fund is growing fairly well, if I'm not mistaken, Chief.
Yes. The IMRF contributions that everybody on the police department made went directly into that pension fund to get it established and so they got it up on the right foot. Everybody is at the nine ninety-one.
Right.
Percentage of each contribution and those funds are making their way into it and tax levy funds are also making their way into it, so we're confident that within probably the first six years of the fund will be at a point where the fund can actually make some investments that are good for the fund and hopefully it'll do a little bit better more than it right now.
Did the, was there like previous IMRF funds and retirees that also contributed to-
Yes, that was the basis for the fund. That's what started it.
So there was actually some already collecting from IMRF?
No, anybody that was on IMRF already collecting is collecting a pension from IMRF. So it's only people that are currently paying into the fund that their money's turned over into it.
And with that, I only bring up the pension fund because there are two appointments on there from the executive branch chair, so legislative branch, executive himself, so. And that really concludes my short overview. I know it's a lot, you know, I don't expect you to retain too much, but maybe I've triggered a few things, you wanna ask me a few questions, that's fine. But really, it, it is to set up that whether we're big or we're small, we have many of the same functions as a much larger community that has staff to carry out those to the nth degree, things of that nature. But we're, we're getting by and, and I can tell you this, what we do, we make every attempt to do it right and do it once, do it right the first time. And as I said earlier, the support of the, of the, of the elected officials, that carries a heavy weight with every employee who works here, you know? We appreciate that support and, you know, we're happy to perform our duties. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you if I might. May I make a comment?
Yes, sir. I mean, if this is an inappropriate time, I don't know what you're telling us.
Conversation.
Our water department, I'll have to come back there for one second. How many pump stations do we have?
For water?
Yes.
Two wells.
Two wells.
Yes, sir.
Did we not have one go down on us or we had a major problem?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, and, and just so the trustees are aware, the money that goes in, when people pay the water bill, covers all of our breaks and all the other things that go on during the year. We're not looking to make a profit, but we're comfortable with what's happening there. But we have nothing in reserve to do any repair on the pump stations. And that will have to be, I feel it has to be addressed by, by us as a board, you know, to somehow come up with a way of having a fund available for that because, because we weren't, we are in the black with everything, we're able to cover that cost. And so people understand that the pump that went down, that it removed pipe, it was over two hundred feet deep, it weighed a lot, it was very costly to do. We, we got to do that pump.
Yes, sir. That, that bill approached fifty thousand dollars.
That high. So anyway, it's not to say that something can't happen again, so we need to look into that during the year of how we can get some kind of a surplus in there to, you know, cover anything that might happen to a pump station.
So then those repairs came out of what capital funds, general funds?
Uh, it came out of the, of the water fund. The water fund is, it has its own fund, okay? Water and sewer, they have-
So that's what dried up the reserves, is what the trustee-
Uh, yes, and, and they're not, they're not totally dry, okay? I will say this, that the Village of Moni is, is very well positioned financially. And it, it comes through hard work, you know, making the right investments as far as personnel, equipment, functionality of items, you know? It, it's just worked out really well. So we, you know, we have some planning to do. I've had long discussions with the mayor already and I think as, as, you know, people and this whole change of administration did acclimate it, you know, you'll see some of that. That's how we got to this point, it was by good planning. So, you know, everyone can say, or someone can say, we should be further along, but the fact is, this is where we're at and it's okay to be here. We just have to continue to work to progress and provide the best services possible.
If, if I may, just to go along with what you were saying, Chris, about the, the reality is, is we are in need within the next five years at the very most of another water tower. We've got a water tower, and just to bring you off the speed, we've got a water tower over-
It's another, right?
Chestnut, the fifty thousand, we need one that's five hundred thousand to bounce out if, whenever we actually have to service the one over in Cleveland. And that's not gonna be cheap and it's probably gonna indicate a acquisition of land and a new location for a new tower and based on potential growth and other things and, and more likely towards the east than where it's currently located. And we've got other things, you know, it's like we've run lean, but we wanna make sure that we're providing the right resources towards getting to our goals with, you know, with the police department, you know? We got some of our squads that don't have computers on them. And, you know, that's a point of efficiency for, for our personnel to know how to respond in situations. There, there's things of efficiency that we need to work towards and we're gonna have to lean on, on the expertise of the department heads to provide us the, their realistic goals that we can attain to. And I know that, you know, we've been looking at grants for infrastructure and, and the chief has had a lot of experience with grants for various things and, and we're going to pursue those items. But we have to remember that even some of the roads or subdivisions that are in dire need of root air pack, that's just because of how they, some subdivisions win at all the same time and then we find ourselves not having a, a progressive plan to deal with that proactively. And so at some point, we're gonna have to perhaps scarf up some of that and reapply some in some areas or at the very least, make sure we do an effective praxillating and things like that to keep water from penetrating into our knee. Our stormwater is an issue, it's gonna be an issue. The administrator myself had met with the county regarding a, a local development, times of frustration there, quite frankly. I got schooled on how county doesn't care as much as I'd like it to. And fortunately, the administrator myself had gone down to South Urban Mayor's and Managers and Will County Government, they had gone down to Springfield, we had the opportunity to meet with the governor and my voice was shot at the time, so the administrator very eloquently addressed some concerns and if you wanna delve into a little bit of doubt what his interest was at the time, that'd be fine as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do that. Before I forget, I would like to mention the police department is undergoing a reconstruction type of project for the roof and affiliated issues. Approaching, probably approaching two years ago, mold was discovered in there. And the bottom line is mold is bad, there is a leak, it was behind the walls. We did all the remediation immediately, put a stop to it and before it could be reconstructed, the walls put back in place, you have to fix the source of the issue. That's the roof turned into the off-season winter. Now they're on top of that project right now. It has been a long and arduous task, not only to get it done, but in order for the police department to work under those conditions. I can't say enough about the chief and his staff. Never once did I hear any complaint about it. Friendly reminders, but no complaint and rightfully so. So now we're able to, to get that along and, and get that taken care of. That project is slated for, you know, half a million dollars. That's a lot of money. And I'd like to say that the village has elected in the, in, you know, over the past few years, well, the tax won't be flat. We've not raised our amount of money that we were collecting from the residents at all. So that's a squeeze from both ends, if you will, and, but we've managed to, to handle that and live with that. And the last thing I'd like to say is I did wanna add on, under Public Works, I know we mentioned the sewer and water, which are the, you know, some main issues, but just as largely an issue is roads and bridges. You know, we have a lot of roads that need work and very little money. So, you know, we're gonna make do, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, patch where we can, put in roads where we can. It's gonna, again, it will be a long and arduous task, but the way that we get there is planning and we'll make it. If I, would you like me to refer to the governor's office?
Yes, yes, yes.
And two things that the governor, when we met with the governor, it was a room of about forty people, I guess, other towns and so forth and the governor and there were two things. The main thing was, the gov-, excuse me, the governor first said that he wanted to initiate a stormwater management initiative because of the flooding that took place. That's fine, we're ready for that and that's where I was jumping out of my seat and, you know, I asked the mayor if I could talk and, and he let me, so I just said, it's this, Mr. Governor, we met with Will County, the problem is not local municipalities that govern stormwater management because it's, in Will County, it's a very restrictive ordinance and we have to abide by it. Our real problem is we're using valuable, valuable land to store our stormwater with a controlled release, but when it gets released, it's the unincorporated areas of the tributaries that can't take it. They're not clean. Nobody's taking care of that. It's unincorporated, that's not our jurisdiction. Well, in our meeting a week earlier with the county, I believe county board member Bob Howard is, is that correct? Yeah, indicated that the county is, is looking to have legislation introduced that would allow the old drainage districts, which is a taxing body, be taken over by county control. And what that does is the old drainage districts, they're not being utilized like they used to be, where, you know, people would go out and clean them, they'd hire people to, you know, clean the tributaries. That's not happening and so therefore it's making tougher and tougher for us to get the stormwater to the tributaries of the state of Illinois. Consequently, what happens is when you start to back that up, you create, start to create wetlands. Once you've created that and it's a jurisdictional wetland under the Army Corps of Engineers, you've lost the game. They are the most uncooperative group of individuals that exist. That's, that's how nice I can be to them, that's all I can say. So we're moving along the way there and the governor listened, but the mayor and I both know that and I'm sure that you are well aware, you know, ninety percent of politicians at that level is rhetoric, maybe ninety-five percent, I don't know. So we'll let it go.
Then a real quick question. Those funds that are being collected by these draining taxing bodies, who collects that? Is that held down at the state, the township level?
They've been working. What's happened is, is a lot of those drainage districts used to be managed by a cooperation of farmers who used to have a lot of farm agricultural area. And that was an agreement between them that those were established because it was cooperative between all the adjoining farm land that was affected by it. That was fifty, a hundred years ago, whatever else. We've got a drainage district that I just heard about from one of our vendors down, it's called the Gorman Drainage District. And I knew it was called the Gorman's, I was like, hey, what do you guys know about this? It's like, we call it all the time because it looks like them, but it's, it could have been originally from, you know, Monroe or somebody, you know, previous generations, whatever, that may have had something to do with that, because it affected his property ultimately. But it actually goes along the north side of Moni through into University Park even, across to the other side of Fifty Sub. But it shows up on the deeds for some of those properties because it's affecting those, but it's, I was told by somebody that they thought Moni had inherited that back in, what I'd say, back in the eighties? That somebody thought that we'd inherited the responsibility of dealing with that, but even though it's not even within our municipality. So if we can find some evidence of it, the, I mean, some paperwork's been lost over the years, so, but if we can find evidence that that is within our jurisdiction, even though it's an unfunded jurisdiction, that really does help us, it helps University Park because there's a common, we, as the administrator indicated, we're sitting high and we kinda share that plateau, if you will, with University Park in a lot of regards. We kinda, the water floats back and forth between us across. And so that, that would be very useful to have access to that if we could. Ultimately, if the county can take jurisdiction, it, they're better suited to, to look at the big picture within our, our area and that would, that would serve everybody's purposes.
And trustee Pearson, not to mislead you, it's not that these drainage districts are, are building up a whole bunch of money. If you fail to file levies and things of that nature, eventually it just drops off, you know? You still have a drainage district, but there's no funding going to it anymore because no one has filed a levy or, you know?
Okay, thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor, that, that kind of wraps it up.
Any other questions for the roots here?
Okay. There you go.
I'd like to thank everybody for- I'd like to thank everybody for accommodating in this special meeting, just to bring about a, an orientation, if you will, and bring a bit of speed on some of the past issues. And shortly we'll go into executive session, just to make sure that everybody's also aware by the attorney litigation and labor relations issues and things of that sort. Just want to make sure everybody's up to speed on all that. One of the things I've been working with the administrator on has to do with the, the campaign-related issue that has to do with the, the general tone of our village. And I, I think we're, it's not that it's so bad, it's just that we want to improve on. And I, I know the department heads are, are embracing that and, and that's a good thing. So we're establishing a better expectation on how we deliver our message, not just that we deliver the technically correct message, but we do it in a way that it's found to be receptive. During the last, I'll say the last, probably about the last month, Mr. Administrator, I I've come to the very real sense of how important it is for the trustees to step up and do as much as they can. I'm so much more used to the legislative side of it where I, you could deal with the policy of, of those things and it's three minutes of government and all that, I'm not sure whether judicial falls into all this, but that's not really our concern here today. But it's, it's a lot of work and I, I'm going to tell you right now, I look with open arms to the support and participation of all the trustees, the general public, those that are interested in getting involved and helping us achieve the things that we need to. I'm, I'm not the least bit against delegating in order to get things done. And if I don't thank the delegated, it's just because I'm probably very busy with those going on, so we need to make sure that the trustees are actively involved. When we get into the committee discussions, and we'll do that in just a minute, you'll understand where I'm, where I'm going at some of that. Do you, do you all have any questions for me at all? Mr. Trustee.
I got three additions for board's consideration. The first item that was attributed to the board that we, was an ordinance creating a finance department for the village of Moonee. I put in the ordinance, the section one, section two, the creation of the finance department. Section three delineates the responsibilities of the finance department and section four is your repealer. Basically, what we're going to be doing is collecting the fees, sticker fees, permit fees, liquor licenses. That first, the department also be responsible for the oversight of the financial reporting, purchasing, contract administration, payroll system implementation. And number three, also prepare and report the village's annual operating capital budget. Since we have over five thousand individuals at this point in time, there is an upswing, hopefully with respect to revenue, a finance department, more like it would be appropriate.
Okay. All right. Mr. Board.
And with your ordinance, number sixteen forty.
I need a motion in support of the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir. I, Mr. Board, if you have a little.
We have a discussion.
I'm sorry.
Can you go over just a little bit, in just a few minutes, sort, sort of the evolution of coming to this place where we, where we're creating a finance department?
Yeah, I, actually if I can, I'll refer the administrator on that because he's actually had longer history in, in this area than I do, so if.
Yes, you can. Just thinking how to answer that.
When you say the evolution, I'm not sure if you would like to move back to.
Basically, this is not a new thought, as it, as it may, it's just coming to fruition. Now, the functionalities of the, quite frankly, of the, that position, which is now handled and there's no sense dancin' around the issue, it's a unionized position. There's critical information, confidential information, that I'm going to say that ninety-nine percent of the time is available through the Freedom of Information Act. However, we use that Freedom of Information Act to cause us to distribute that information. We just don't put it out there. And there may be instances where that information is not subject to go out under freedom of information because something is, is going on. That's one vein of it. The other vein is, is that there needs to be a, a direct accountability to the finances of the municipality. And what we have is, is we may have an individual now that does a fine job to the best of her ability and, but we need to take it one step further as we move into, anyone familiar with audits? It, it's a position that we can start to invest now, which saves us in the future when our audits are done. Everything, i- if we get to a level of, of the, of the finance department and it's operated like a finance department, it's really autonomous from the daily operations and they deal on the finance side of things. There's a large amount of money that's out there that needs to be watched over and, and moved around and, and done so efficiently. And, you know, quite frankly, that we have given this a lot of thought both previously and now, and this brings it to fruition. It is probably something that, that wouldn't have hurt to have been implemented, you know, ten years ago. But like I said earlier in my, in my overall presentation, you know, it doesn't matter what should have been done or whatever, it's where we're at now and it's being proactive to set the municipality up for future endeavors. That's, that's really what it is.
If I can add to that as well, I, I guess the thing is here on that is with the right structure, the right, when you define it as almost more of a managerial expectations, we can expect people to, to look at it more than just doing numbers and look at it more of a helping us with better insight. You know, in that kind of situation where if you, if you have a departmental structure where you add a different level of expectation, but instead of just merely processing numbers, doing entries and things of that sort, maybe that should be much more.
And this department would also handle payroll as well now.
Absolutely. I mean, if, quite frankly, it's quite a task, you know, to do payroll, receivables, payables, utility billing, you know, I mean, everything. Util- we barely get done with utility billing, the collection of those bills, because the village board has been very gracious in, in allowing that thirty-day window to pay. And then there's a fifteen-day window for, you know, when you get your late notice. And by the time all that time passes, we're ready to go out and start reading the meters again, start that process all over. It's a very, a very entiring task, I mean, and stuff sometimes, we weren't right back up on it. So there's a lot to be done and, and not to prolong, but ultimately, when interest comes back a little bit and things of that nature, there are probably better venues in which our monies could be secured to, you know, give us a little bit better return than what we're able to achieve at this point.
And for the discussion, does this, will then this can be considered like a four-year or a week full time?
Well, that would be, actually be item number two, but yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion on item one, under the terms you're for? Okay. Mr. Board, you have a vote, please.
This is for sixteen forty. Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Horton.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Papp.
Yes.
Trustee Raisin.
Yes.
Trustee Ray Zepson.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item to board's consideration in connection with this department is an ordinance creating a position of finance director to village of Moonee as set forth as a preamble. And then section two, we create the finance position appointed by the mayor with advice and consent of the board of trustees. The term of set appointment would be at the pleasure of the mayor and board of trustees, but it can act by law exceed longer than the term the mayor making the appointment. The powers and duties are set forth in section four. Basically, what would transpire, the director shall vote his or her full time to the district of duties. The director shall be responsible to the village administrator as provided herein. The director shall be carrying the budget for the use by the mayor and board of trustees. The director shall be directly responsible for receipt, collection, return, dispersment of village revenues. Number five would indicate the aiding and preparation of annual budget for all departments. Number six, the director shall submit to the village administrator any additional or supplemental information as may be requested by the board or the administrator. Number seven, the director shall develop and execute a long-range audit and cash flow program. Number eight, the director shall develop a purchasing dispersment procedure be filed by all persons authorized to make such purchases. And number nine, the director shall assist the auditors of the village and shall assist and work with the village administrator. Mayor and board of trustees' salary will be established by the village on an annual basis. Number six, in case of removal of office, the mayor has a right to appoint a temporary until a full-time position. A full-time director will be so nominated and then the rest is a repeal and savings clause. But this position would be in charge of the finance department.
Ordinance number.
This would be ordinance sixteen forty-one.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, please?
I'll make them up. So good.
Okay.
All right, trustee Horton.
Yes, any discussion?
The, the one thing, if I might, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment that in addition to the ordinance, we are developing a job description that will overlay, that'll be much more direct, just for board's information, that's all. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other discussion about trustees?
Trustee Horton.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Papp.
Yes.
Trustee Raisin.
Yes.
Trustee Ray Zepson.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is for ordinance amending kind of two, section one, chapter two of the village code. This is a position for, we would indicate it as a director and also the responsibilities of community services coordinator. In the pre- I do have the preamble set forth. And in section two, we name, the mayor will name a director. He or she will be responsible to run the ESDA section of the village and also be a community service coordinator. The mayor will make the appointment with the advice and consent of the board of trustees. Again, that individual will serve at the pleasure of the mayor and board of trustees for a period not to exceed the term the mayor makes in the appointment. Once again, the salary for this director shall be established on an annual basis.
Now, would the ordinance number?
Ordinance number sixteen forty-two, Mayor.
Okay. Any a motion on that?
A motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I, I had a comment. So the ESDA combined with, are we saying we're combining with the community service officer? Did I hear that right? Is I read that right? Okay. Community service officer is.
Community service coordinator.
Coordinator, okay. Coordinator, that is, in layman's language, like helping with parks and rec, am I correct?
It, it very likely include that, especially since we don't have a parks and rec coordinator at this time specifically. We have a desperate need for emergency services planning and that is something that has not been tackled previously, even though it's been acknowledged. And I think that there's been a, when you, when you look at any number of things that have happened in our nation over the last, you know, ten years even, and most recently in Boston, you say, well, that's not going to affect us, we're, we're Moonee. They had the G-six on it last year and it affected all the way out to here. We don't know how far that goes, we got trains to go through here. I'm old enough to remember when Crest City had an explosion. We had a tornado two years ago. We've got a, an entire subdivision, if you will, that is Gulf Coast specifically, that is a senior-based community, that a number of the residents don't really have an evacuation plan that's affected. And I think that it would be more than unfortunate if we ignored that need to address the care and the safety of our residents in that regard. Our police are doing a fine job, the fire department's doing a fine job, but this is a, more of a, an emergency services situation that we would need somebody who would be capable of stepping up in a crisis and not somebody who's part of our police, not somebody who's part of the fire, not somebody who's public orders, but somebody who could help draw all those resources together to effect a plan, strategic planning and response and things of that regard. Coupled with that, that is, initially, that's going to be a pretty overwhelming responsibility.
It is, and the one thing I'd like to add to that, Mr. Mayor, is that is chief sit guard I alluded to earlier with the NIMS training that he will be putting a flyer together for. In a true emergency, the reason you don't want dual hats there is because the police have their thing to do, emergency management is in charge in an emergency. The police have their things to do, public works has their things to do, elected officials have their things to do. That's what the NIMS training, you know, is, is all about. And, you know, emergency services coordinates with county, emergency management and, as well as the state. Most recently, I can say that two years ago, when we had the snow, it was declared in a state of emergency with the snowstorm. We were able to retrieve funds that we expended in order to keep our streets clear and things of that nature. That really, stuff like that is coordinated through the emergency services director, if you will. So someone, and, and I'm not complaining, but someone had to drop what they were doing in order to get that done. But that was the hot button at the time because it allowed us to recoup some funding. Most recently, state of Illinois declared several counties disaster areas with, and available for federal aid. That's where the type of coordination comes in and it is not something that, you're not going to be able to do it halfway and get by with the county, they won't allow it, they're very strict. The state agencies are very strict and.
And I, I think you go along with the question, trustee Horton. One of the things that's going to rely upon, I mean, you think about it, just use Gulf Coast as an example. We have about approximately three hundred homes over there, John?
Yeah.
I'm not sure the percentage, but we don't have enough personnel on payroll, on the police, fire, et cetera, to deal with the emol that may reside in that one subdivision alone. We just don't have it. This particular, the demand on this position in this department, expectations to fulfill that is going to have a heavy, I, I feel personally, a, a responsibility to make sure that we have coverage in this area. And we had a tornado two years ago. I mean, it's, you know, evacuation, you can say, oh yeah, well, they can go to St. Paul's or St. Boniface, but it's like, okay, how are they going to get there? What are we going to do to accommodate a, a safe haven, a shelter in a, in a difficult situation? Is that along us? No, not necessarily, but we need to actually do our part to make sure that if there's grants available to help us achieve those things, we need to have somebody that can actually focus on those things. Commendable, I just unaside him. The administrator, I did get into earlier, the administrator's done a phenomenal job of dealing with things the best that he can, but there's a whole slew of things that we need to be focusing more on economic development and, and the, I jokingly referred to the administrator earlier as our soft engineer, but he's got that insight and ability to help us with that. We need somebody in this capacity to deal with this at that level. The reason why it would also be embracing of some of our community service, recreational or whatever types of programs, that also depends on a lot of volunteer participation. And a lot of those volunteers, once you identify who people are, what their skills or strengths, things of that sort are, you, you, you find out who your talent is in those areas and the availability, then you're putting together an auxiliary team that goes beyond the scope of our employed. of our employed personnel that are dealing with other crises that they'll have to deal with. So, any more discussion on that?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gray Zepson. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Okay. In, in general, Larry, do you have any general talking points? I know we're going to go into decades, session for those things for that item, but do you have anything that's more general, but would be sort of larger?
I think Mr. Walsh was very, very thorough. What they try to do is, he is a conduit on behalf of the village, he's very good, and what happens is, he runs the village with the board's insight. Right, he was very thorough.
Do you, do, do you have questions for the attorney, in, in general, this point?
As a point of clarification, now, this title is being changed from the original packet from item three from a coordinator to?
Director. It's just a terminology.
That ordinance that was handed out at the beginning, that was a replacement ordinance for that, had the correct terminology in that question. Thank you.
I've been thinking of this as well, related to legal issues here, and that is, there is a couple of opportunities for the elected officials to attend some workshops in the near future. Some of those may have been in your mailboxes, unfortunately, some of the new officials didn't have mailboxes to have stuff placed into. But there's a, there's an event on June first that is hosted by South suburban mayors and managers, that is a workshop from seven thirty a.m. till noon at the mayor's manager's office up there on Sunday, fifth and Dixie. If any of you are interested, I can get your names on the list if you haven't already responded, that's Saturday, the first, because I'll just take note of those interested in attending now.
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
I have a time, but.
Okay. And trustee Pop, you've been, you've been to that one before. It's a good reflection, sure you want to go with it?
I'm okay.
Okay.
We have a few sales.
Yes, they're.
Do you think the place is open enough?
I'm psyched, boy.
Trustee Gonzalez?
I am psyched, I'm too.
Okay. And then there's another event that's probably similar, but a little more intense, and that's even much nearer to us, and I apologize for this one, but it actually looks to be a very informative session, and I believe that's actually this, you have the impression of there. This is actually this Friday, they have three openings, and that's actually up at the, the Rose one?
Yes. West End and over there.
And what are the hours on that one?
I believe that's nine a.m. to three p.m.
And that looks to be a very, very informative event, if any of you are interested in attending that.
That's on Friday.
That's on Friday. I know stuff, work schedules and everything, it's kind of a late bonus on that, but.
And we, sitting here, we really don't know if there are any seats remaining. At this time, there were only three. If someone does have an interest, we'd likely give the information, you should just call on your own, and, you know, if you could go, it's free of charge, if you could go, you can go, great, you know, if you can't, or if they tell you it's full, understood.
Just, so I have an idea, any interest from the people here?
Interested, yes, but they're, I understand from the moment.
I'd love to go, but I think if I weren't definitely interested, I'd need to check my schedule.
Okay. All right. All right. Now, into, that's into your, okay, now into committees. The committee structure, as previously implemented, I think has been something that's been carried on intermittently by tradition and not necessarily by ordinance. There's been, typically, there's been one committee per trustee, there's been other commissions and such in the past. Give you an example, I was the chair of the public property committee as a trustee, and looking at the ordinance supporting that, it was the responsibility of that committee to oversee the public property department, which we don't have. So, it creates a little bit of an anomaly when you look at some of that. But aside from that, there's really, I believe, only two actual committees besides the planning and zoning and things like that that the administrator indicated. One had to do with water, and that's been kind of muted, if you will, because it had to do more with processing concerns with outstanding bills than it really had to do with infrastructure. Even though we utilize it in that way, it wasn't really so much defined that way. That being the case, I contacted some other municipalities and asked them how they knew I find the committee structure at times to be providing us with accountability, but at the same time lethargicness when it comes to getting things implemented. What I endeavor to do would be to create an open environment where instead of saying lots of differences, if I'm on the water committee as a trustee, then it's difficult for me to have any conversation with any of the other committee members outside of an actual meeting or a board meeting because of the nature of all the meetings, violations pertaining to that. It seems more prudent to move things along, and let's say, for instance, I'll just give you an example. If we don't do committees per se, we have a report of the officials, which is what some of our neighboring municipalities have done. Let's say, one of you comes up and you say, under report of the officials, similar to where we had before, but instead of giving designations, you might, somebody might say, you know what, it's really come to my concern that there's been an issue of interest pertaining to the Emerald Ash War situation. And in a situation like that, let's say, I know trustee Gonzalez had brought up some interest in that previously, if that were something that was of interest to her, then trustee Gonzalez could say, this is a concern to me, this is something I'd like to sink my teeth into, I'd like to, to pursue available options for that and present them to the board. In the past, our committees have pretty much been, everybody shows up to the committees. Trustee Gonzalez could then look for remedies, present those remedies to the board, much as likely to have done previously with or without committee structure, but then is not encumbered by having to deal with the formalities of committees per se. She finds her, if for some reason trustee Gonzalez just wants to complain and doesn't actually want to come up with a real solution, then that would become rather evident, I guess, at some point. I don't see that being a situation, it's a reason I use you as an example, of course, but I think it affords us the ability to be, move a little more fluidly in that regard. I think our department heads will be better suited if given direct explanation on issues pertaining to their departments at the actual meetings as necessary. If we get into a situation where, let's say, for instance, you know, the, the perpetual concern regarding sign ordinance issues, something of that regard frankly is related to the planning and zoning of our village, and an ordinance in that capacity, in my opinion, would be well suited to throw back to the planning committee commission and let them address, how does that best serve our village in the big picture? How do we want to address those things? They can present their findings in that regard, and then bring those back to the board as a presentation, the chairman can make the presentation, or whatever the case might be. Although things pertaining to governance of the municipality wouldn't go necessarily with planning, zoning for ordinance related, but they would go, perhaps if they were prolonged discussion, we could have a special meeting or a committee at the whole in that case to have a discussion regarding a single item that would be of, of interest or concern. I, I just believe that's a more efficient way to deal with what we have here. We're setting policy is what, is what the trustees are responsible for doing, doing fact finding, bringing the fact finding back so that the, the whole board can benefit from the work of the individuals. And it takes active involvement, it doesn't necessarily take the encumbrance of committees that haven't necessarily worked well here in the past. I, I really want to focus more on results than I do about titles. And sometimes you need titles to get things done, I'm well aware of that. But I think that we can try this for a season and see how it works. The only thing that I believe that I need to deal with is, if, if that's okay with you all, I mean, I'm, I'm asking you because it's by the consent and approval of the board, so I'm asking for your permission for us to try this for a season, see how it works, see if it, if it works well, and if it does, we'll continue then. If it doesn't work well, then we can always go back and adopt committees as previously implemented and try that out for a season. We actually don't really have, most of the committees we have weren't by definition by, by, by actual ordinance. Larry, did you confirm?
What I think, well, you.
Yeah, well, the, the commissions and.
The commissions, yes.
Right.
Water.
Right. And so in that regard, with your permission, I don't know if I can just get a discussion on something in that regard.
So, if I understand this correctly, then there's not even an ordinance establishing a finance committee either?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, come on.
Yes.
Basically, committees, there's no allocation for committees in Illinois law, but by and large, committees are used at the, at the pleasure of the, the mayor and the board, you know, if that's the direction they go, but they really don't even need to be defined by ordinance, they're more policy because they are a, counsel, help me out, suggestive committee.
That gives some ideas as to, it depends on the size of the village, I believe. The other villages I've worked with, we do have committees, but other villages don't. And I think what the mayor's looking for is more of a, more open communication, and hopefully we'll label more partners that way. But it's, I would say, a liaison, and they make suggestions, they don't have power to add.
Recommendations is what they're looking for, yeah. That's how committees were, were set up, and, you know, if committees are set up and aren't defined, you might have some issues, but the, defining those committees, should those be chosen to be used in the future, it's simply by defining their areas of responsibility through policy, that's all. But there really is no necessity to have an ordinance or anything of that nature, it's not called for by state law.
So, so what we, what you may end up having, though, is, as trustees, working as a group, because pretty much most of the committee meetings I've, I've been at as a trustee, five out of six of the trustees have been there. So, you know, having a committee at the whole, it's every time. What you might end up doing as a consideration would be commissions, like the police commission is actually mandated by state law, but a parks and rec commission would be something that was previously implemented and subsequently taken away. We might, might be more inclined to do that for the formality, like we have a planning and zoning commission and such. Those would be more relevant because they don't have the structure that binds them together like we have here already.
So then, with the stipulation then, so long as, you know, with the appointment of your appointee, you know, as a director and a financial, a finance director?
Correct.
That they will be at board meetings to report any findings that they had?
That, that, that would be my expectation, at least, at least once a month, I would expect a report from those directors and departments. I'm not saying that that could be at every single meeting, but as, as needed, in, in the past, there's, there's been an allowance for treasurer's report, things of that sort. I would like to have some more formal presentation for the scrutiny of the entire board as well as the public in those issues. Any other questions on some of those things? In lieu of the commission, committees, I should say, I do need to address that there's supposed to be, and again, I don't even know if there's an actual, forgive for this, but the, the stipulation that there is a trustee overseeing finance and license and things of that sort has been a formality of the past, but not necessarily established. Correct. But for a measure of checks and balances from within the ranks of the legislative department, branch here, I would ask that I would have one trustee that would be designated as the author's, authorized person for license and finance for signing, counter signing, if you will, not signed by themselves, but one of the three signatures for checks and/or business licenses and things of that sort. So, I would look for your input on that. I think the importance on that particular appointment designation, if you will, is the, is a seasoned amount of business experience, which is important, but also frankly, availability throughout the day, afternoon, whatever the case may be, is needed to make sure we can keep things moving along. So, that would be my, my concern and recommendation on that. Those would be the criteria I'd be looking for, for somebody that would hold the finance director specifically, to a certain extent responsible, and yet, somebody that's authorized by you to be assigned for that. If you guys have suggestions on that, I'm open to it. Y'all have any suggestions on that? I need one of you.
I would.
Outside.
Okay. So, I don't know if this needs to be formalized, it, it's not actually on the agenda for tonight, so does that need to be put on the agenda for next week, then?
I would. It needs to be an extra.
Can we, can we stipulate pending?
Yes, sir.
So that, because we have some formalities, we have to deal with some intro. Okay. Okay. So, is that, it's not actually.
It's a form of a motion.
It, it can't actually be voted on at this time, so it'll be just contention on, okay. All right. Unfortunately, I'd like to have it voted on, so unless I have consensus. Trustee Pop, are you good with that as well?
No, no problem.
All right. Any questions from the rest of you regarding committee structures, suggestions?
Just, just that being said, though, I know that I know, we had talked about it a little bit, you know, that there are or had been established committees.
Committees or commissions, correct.
Yeah, the committees, that, the ones that we would still like to be involved with, or this is, you know, the things that we'd like to sink our teeth into, to give us kind of like a guideline, or you a guideline, and the things that.
Yep. Basically, the things that you're passionate about as individual trustees or the public brings to our attention, that needs to have a, the ability to move forward with that without inundating each of the employees, department heads, things of that sort, with being bombarded with six questions instead of one. But as those topics of interest come up, you know, the trees is an example, that's something that if you were to say, you know, without a specific assignment to whether it be public property, or since it's really the parkways, is it road and bridge, is it, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, a, a single area of concern that has to do with the village's responsibility to that matter. You could be looking at the issues of grants and all the other supporting thing. If that's something you're personally interested in, then all you have to do, if, if we go with this, then under the report of the officials would be, under the report of the officials, you could say, you know what, I would really like to sink my teeth into this issue pertaining to the Emerald Ash War and remedies and our resolution on that, and you could, as long as it's necessary, to keep presenting information to the board on that matter, by all means, keep doing it. And then, and in such a time that it's resolved, or somebody else wants to help you with that, you know, by all means, it's just a matter of allowing people not to be encumbered by committees, but to make progress by personal participation. And frankly, there may be a time where somebody from the general public comes in and says, I've got a concern about whatever, and, and I might say, well, do you have a remedy? Would you like to present a remedy at the next meeting for the, for the board to review? I know that sounds a little different, but I'm not opposed to the general public, you know, contributing ideas, not just complaints, you know, and, and I think that's a way to work around some of it. So, let's, let's get the input from whoever we can, as it's, as time permits, you know, I know you all have different schedules and things like that, so as time permits, if people can work on things, let's, Larry, you have anything else? So, I, I'd like to try it with your commission, if we can try that for a while, and if you got certain things that you're interested in, then present it, and on that topic, you'll, you'll be designated to, to be the trustee responsible for finding a remedy. Okay? Under unfinished business, I don't believe there's anything else at this time. New business?
Mr. Mayor, were you looking for a vote or a decision?
It's just, I don't know that I really need to vote because there's no committee by structure currently, other than, the only thing I would ask to do would be, I'm sorry, going back to that if we can, only thing I would ask to do in that regard would be, if we're going to try that, then we really need to look at the two committees, water, public property, and repeal those in order to make sure that there's not a conflict of the sorts there. Sales. Yeah, so I'll, I would just, and since there's not a consistent implementation for other committees anyhow, it would make sense to have the attorney just review the possible repeal of that. And that's something we'd have to vote on at the next meeting anyhow. General consensus is okay with it?
Yes.
If there's no other new business, I'd like to open it to the public for non-agenda items, please, let me intercom us three minutes, come to the podium and give your name and numbers.
David Holstein, 5326 West Main Street.
I don't think you're on.
Trustee. Thank you.
Okay.
A couple of things, I may have had over the last eighteen months to attend virtually all of the village meetings because I feel like as chair of the zoning committee, I need to be hearing what the trustees and the mayor are doing so that we can participate. I'm encouraged to hear what you suggested tonight, I know you've not got previous conversations about that. Not too much on the subject matter tonight was economic development.
Correct.
Economic development is a very big part of the, I was fortunate enough to attend with you this week a meeting of the regional consensus of Chicago Softland and Timely Park, and two items came up there that I think will have to be addressed by this board over the next twelve months. One was the Eliana Highway, which could be on the table as early as September of 2014, and also the Etton Airport, which also could be on the table as early as 2014 September, probably won't be, but could be. From the administrative point of view, the IDO has indicated they will be ready and should more funding appear, $7 million is all they need to get the last 50% of the land, they've already purchased 50% of the land for that. I also want to mention that I have experience with the type of village board organization that you just mentioned, by committee, in the city of Roswell, in the Yanopse, it worked very well there. I think the key there though is, I do want to mention this, that the police commission, the finance department, the community service director, the department of public works absolutely have to be at a really board meeting, because if the public has a question, they need to be able to ask a question, so those people need to be here. If the trustees have a question, they need to be here everywhere, if not, then the appearance of things being done behind closed doors is very evident, they would be there, so I would be the next one, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could have a second?
Yes, please.
Just to let everyone know in the room, we do have an emergency plan for the village and the police department, Parker and Jeff have been trained extensively in incident command and national incident management system. Granted, the tornado tasked us and taxed our abilities to truly our limits and that's all, and I would certainly, you know, welcome the football being dropped off to somebody else if we do that plan, but just so that you know that you can have some confidence in knowing that we already do do everything we're supposed to do and when this new person does come online, I'll be happy to absolutely work with them in whatever way I can to make this a successful.
All right, at this point with no other items for open to the public, I need a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Pertaining to collective bargaining litigation and personnel matters.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Rocco, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gray? Not here. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, or motion to come out of executive session and.
I'll all of them.
Second. Gonzalez and Raisik.
It's dead now, there's no like.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gray is absent, Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay. Coming out of executive session, I, we have one item needed for action.
Yes, sir. The mayor would like to, with the board's approval and consent, recommend the appointment of.
Ruben Batista.
Thank you, Ruben Batista to be the ALST slash.
Community.
Community services director at a starting rate of.
Seventy-five.
$75,000. He would need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Okay. Rocco?
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Raisik. Gonzalez. Horn?
Yes.
With nothing else at this time, you need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? House, win 41. Sorry. Just wanted to throw that in there. No.
Thanks a lot. Who made the motion, seconded it, please?
I need Horn.
Doug made the motion, I need seconded.
Okay, we'll call Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Absent.
Go on, absent. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Pearson.
Pearson. On my list, it's been this, doesn't go that way, Pearson, okay, thank you.
All right, the meeting is adjourned at 10:40 on May 15th. Thank you.